Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, June 16th, 2025. I think we have the agenda. Wrong date on the agenda.
Oopsie.
5:30, 2:00 PM. With the Coram being present, I'll call to order the Freetown Board of Suckin' Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our YouTube page. So with that, we'll just jump right into Agenda Item 1. Discussion and vote whether approve the fiscal year 2026 reappointment list from the town clerk as presented in Attachment A. And we're not going to go through all the appointments because there's like a couple hundred of them. I looked through them, nothing seemed to jump out at me. Any questions or concerns with this list?
There's just that one addendum, an amendment under Agenda 1A, and it's highlighted on your desktop here.
Okay, yep, so this amended to include...
Nadasia?
That's a tough...
Nadasia Francesca?
Francesca. Fonseca, Fonseca. I know that. I know a lot of people that last name. A senior clerk fire. Okay.
It's a solid Portuguese name.
Fonseca. Okay. So it looks good. Yeah. I know, sure, it's not easy to get all this together, so pretty sure everyone's working on that. Ready to vote?
Absolutely.
Let's do it.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 reappointment list from the town clerk presented in Attachment A with the amended amendment also mentioned on the agenda.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Agenda Item 2. Discussion and vote whether approve the surplus list in Attachment B and what to do with these items. These are some large folding tables from the Council on Aging. There's eight of them. Email went out to all department heads, and the transfer station would like to take them. Take what they want to use, and then whatever they don't use, they can... It's a perfect place to dispose of them because it's a transfer station.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say they should go to the transfer station anyway. That's right.
Is everyone okay with that approach?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the surplus list in Attachment B and to send those tables to the transfer station.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda Item 3. Discussion and vote on awarding the insurance contract for 7-1, 2025 through 6:30, 2026. And last meeting, we had presentations from Maya, as well as, well, it's Travelers, and why am I blinking?
USI.
USI, thank you.
On this, I'll recommend that we move our insurance to the, it's USI, with the exception of the IOD insurance, which is Injury on Duty Insurance, which we currently have with Chub. I haven't had time to really review the coverages of the Chub current policy versus the proposed policy from USI. And I'm making this recommendation to the board because we've had so much issues with the service of Maya. And for the last year and a half, I've been having these conversations with Maya that their service needs to improve. They've forgotten to put things on. We've just had some issues. And not to mention, USI is less expensive than Maya. I think that we've done all of this work, and it was a heavy lift for Luanne. I can't even take any credit for this. The bulk of the work is done, and I think, why go through all this work if we're really not going to change? I mean, there were really significant issues with Maya. So I'm gonna say I'd like to try USI. They've assured me that the onboarding is gonna be easy now that they have the bulk of the information. The coverage is similar, the cost is less, and I would either give me the authority to decide the IOD piece of it or leave it right where it is for now. I think moving all of the rest for right now is enough. Chub is a heavy lift too, because that's all our first responders, and we have to go through all their information. And I don't know that we have enough time to do that through the end of the year. It's a lot, and I don't, God forbid, we miss somebody or we make a mistake in the transition. It's just too much for, I think, us to handle. And we haven't had any issues with the Chub piece of the insurance. For the most part, the departments, police and fire, do the paperwork themselves, and they have not complained to me or had any issues that I know of with the service on the IOD piece of it. I talked to both chiefs. They don't have a preference. They're okay with whatever we decide. But I think for all involved, because we're not really having an issue with the service with Chub, let's just leave Chub where it is with Maya and move everything else over. Health insurance will stay with Maya because Blue Cross wouldn't quote it through USI. So I've left the health insurance through Maya because otherwise we would have had to change from Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is not, not good for anybody, and that's not something that the town wants to entertain, I don't believe, at this time.
All right, appreciate that info. Yeah, my biggest concern personally was this, was like what the lift would be on for Luanne, really. You know, and though, like, I'm sure it's a lot of work that goes into that, but if you guys feel comfortable, you know, it's just the administrative kind of lift there. I mean, I think it makes sense to try something else and, and see how it goes. And I think, you know, that's what I say about a competitive market here, like, if it doesn't work out...
Go back.
Go back.
Mm-hmm. No, I mean, I, listen, I agree with everything, because that was my biggest concern as well. I, and this will lock us in with the pricing, right? There's, there's nothing stating anything that the pricing can change throughout the course of the year that will affect us, right? I mean, because you've had a lot of problems with Maya, and that's unfortunate, but we've kind of known that animal, right? And I just worry that if anything will change, and I don't think it will, but I'm only asking it as being pessimistic. So, I mean, because my recommendation would, I'm just saying that my recommendation would have been to switch just based on cost alone if everything for your side was okay.
Yeah. The price is the price. Nothing will change with USI. They've given us the quote. Unless we add, you know, we add things, subtract things, that always changes our price. Maya...
Yeah, that's different, yeah.
I don't think, I think Maya's price on Chub was just a little bit higher than the other quote, but not significantly. I don't think they would change that. I mean, I don't think it changes anything. We have put them on notice that we maybe, you know, we had to give them 30 days' notice, so we put them on notice that we might be changing. And again, I was very clear from the beginning that this was a service-based problem, that we would not be looking for new insurance if the service was there. And I have given them a year and a half to fix the problem, and it hasn't been fixed. And they're, I mean...
Shame on them.
Yeah, they keep saying, yeah, they're going to fix it, but it's not being fixed. And so I feel like shame on me if I don't do, if I don't put my money where my mouth is, right? Like, if we don't actually make a change after all of this, so...
Absolutely, then. It's a no-brainer in my eyes, huh?
Oh, I have no issues. It was from presentation to everything that's said today, it's the right move for the town.
All right. All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to award the insurance contract for 7-1, 2025 through 6:30, 2026 to USI, excluding the IOD.
Sounds good.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda Item 4. Discussion and vote whether approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and all states' construction for chip sealing various roads for fiscal year 2026. And... That's a different one. Do I have this contract in here?
Yep.
Page 15.
Do you need the price? Is that it?
Yeah, I just wanted to put the...
Luanne, how's it right here?
Oh, yeah, sorry. It's right in front of my face. I thought that was for something else. All right, so the price here is $3.90 per square yard for a single chip, $6.95 per square foot yard for double chip seal, and $605 per square foot for 20% rubberized asphalt surface treatment, and $225 per ton for asphalt shimming. Questions or concerns?
Nope. Contract looks good.
It does. All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and all states' construction Inc. for chip sealing for various roads for fiscal year 2026.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next, we have the contract between the town of Freetown and the chief of police. I know a lot of work went into this. Appreciate everyone's hard work. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
All right, so this is a contract that's effective from July 1st, 2025 through July 1st, 2027, right?
No.
Oh, sorry, June 30th, 2028. I'm sorry.
Be a contract.
Okay.
Just standard contract.
All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and Chief Scott Rose effective 7-1, 2025 through 6:30, 2028.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hello, folks. All right. Agenda Item 6. Discussion and vote awarding cleaning services at the police department. Looks like we've got a quote, or our contract is here for $2,773.24 per month with M&amp;M Contract Cleaning. Any questions or concerns?
No, it's gotta be done. It's a big building.
It is a big building. All right. So with that, I want to entertain a motion to award the cleaning services at the police department to M&amp;M Contract Cleaning, Inc.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that was the only quote we got, huh?
It was.
And they are the ones that we're doing it now, and they're... The, the, the police are very happy with them.
Perfect. All right, so this, Agenda Item 7 is related to 6, so this is just to approve the agreement. So with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and M&amp;M Contract, Inc. for cleaning services at the police department.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda Item 8. Discussion and vote whether to approve and sign the agreement between the town of Freetown and Merrill Engineers and land surveyors for professional land survey and related services sown at four corners.
This is that continuation, trying to lay out the full corners so we can at least get the road laid out so we know where it is for all of the future work. We just, we had a recent, another accident there that was more severe.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to keep working on the full corners.
Yeah.
Coming up with solutions.
Yep, we do.
We have put in a grant to work on the full corners. I just don't know with the MBTA Communities Act that we'll receive the grant.
Yep. So this is a fixed fee for $11,000 for this?
Yeah.
I was excited to see fixed fee, because God only knows how long it'll take to dig up some of that stuff.
They've done, they've done a lot of, they've done some work on this already with the sewer line.
Yeah.
The engineering for the sewer line, they were able to start the survey, which is why we kind of know we don't have what we need, and it's just sort of like an extension onto that sewer line contract.
It's a tricky spot.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want the work that we've already done to go for nothing either. I want to complete it and at least get the road laid out. And that way, at least the engineering money we've spent, we don't lose that. It's done. And once it's done and it's laid out and accepted at town meeting, it's there forever, so...
Yeah. I totally agree with that.
Makes sense.
All right, any questions or concerns?
No.
Happy to hear this is at the next stage.
Yep. All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve and sign the agreement between the town of Freetown and Merrill Engineers for the lands, and land surveys for professional land survey and related services for the sown at four corners.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Agenda Item 9. Discussion and vote whether authorized town administrators to negotiate a contract with Johnson Roberts Associates, Inc. for the design services for the COA Library Building. So...
This is the, the COA Library Committee picked this company as their number-one choice.
Yep.
So the procedure is generally, we try to negotiate the contract. If we can't, we go to the number-two choice. So I'm just looking for authority to negotiate that contract with them so that we can move to the next step for the engineering of the new building.
All right.
Yeah, conceptual design, really.
Sounds good. Any questions or concerns?
No. I'm excited.
Yeah.
Excited for this one.
All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to authorize town administrator to negotiate the contract with Johnson Roberts Associates, Inc. for design services for the COA slash Library Building.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I'll kick it over to Suckman Lopes for Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Personnel Board. Agenda number 10. Acknowledge the resignation of Linda Fornier from the Ton River Stewardship Council effective 6/30/2025. Thank you, Linda, for everything you've done for that stewardship council. Number 11. Discussion and vote whether to approve the following appointments. A, Ryan Pereira as acting sergeant on the 4-2 schedule, police department, effective 7-1, 2025 through 6/30, 2025. B, Nicole DeLeiner, DeLeiner, a senior librarian, effective 7-8, 2025 through 6/30, 2026. All right, so Nicole was recently interviewed, hired, or selected by the library trustees as well, and then acting sergeant, Ryan Pereira, is based on shift changes and availability and everything that's going on within the police station. So good, good promotion, little semi-promotion for Ryan, and of course, welcome, Nicole. Any questions, concerns?
No, I just want to call out Ryan because he's been with the town for a long time, and he's finally, you know, he's in school and taking the next step, and it makes me happy to see him climbing the ranks, so...
Absolutely.
Well deserved.
Yep.
All right. I entertain the motion to approve Agenda number 11. Individuals identified as A and B.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda 12. Discussion and vote which select to appoint to the local emergency planning committee. It makes that appointment effective 6/17/2025 through 6/30/2026. Well, this is up my wheelhouse, so I wouldn't mind taking this one on if it's all right with you two.
Absolutely. I've taken the last couple from you so...
Yes, you have. We appreciate that. All right.
Want me to make that motion, then?
Please.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Suckman Lopes to local emergency planning committee and have that appointment effective 6/17/2025 through 6/30/2026.
I will make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
The only thing I wanted to mention is that we have, do you want to do signatures now? I'll talk while she does signatures. Nancy from Planning is working on a grant application for the intersection with Chase Road and County Road, you know, that intersection that will be like a makeshift roundabout that we're trying to get a grant for.
Okay. What, the problem area that we have?
Yeah, with all the accidents that we've had, different people. She'll be submitting that application at the end of next week. I'll bring more information on it. I just want to make you aware of that.
Okay, great.
And again, with MBTA Communities Act, we're not sure that we'll, we'll get it or not, right?
Yeah.
These are the things that we don't know, but we're, we're moving forward as if we might have an opportunity to get these grants. The HVAC system is being installed in the second floor of the town hall, so that's been a long time coming, too.
That's exciting.
So, yeah, Carl is working diligently with them and getting that done. The windows and the new doors went into Fire Station 1.
Okay.
So we found a roof leak over there that, that's being taken care of. So that's another big project that's getting done, again, thanks to Carl and everybody working together to get that done. So there's a lot going on, as usual, in the town. I think that's it for right now. We're talking about town meeting coming up, scheduling that for July 28th to come back before the town with some things. One of which came up today is the, the roof is leaking at FES that we need to do some repairs, yeah.
So let him know.
So we'll be looking to get some funding for that, probably if we have a July meeting or whatever the next town meeting is, we'll be looking for funding to repair those, at least, to keep the roof intact for a little bit further. So that's about all I have for right now, and I have the rest...
You want just Trevor on this one, or is this all of us?
Yeah.
I know, always trying to get some time off here, but we're good.
Deb, we haven't heard anything new about the Chase Street Bridge, have we?
Chase Street Bridge?
Chase Road.
Chase Road.
DOT is doing that?
Yeah.
No, I haven't, sometimes we get updates, but I haven't heard anything new. I can ask Nancy if the, that's probably, that's probably going through Joint Transportation Committee at the syrup ed, so she's...
Is this the bridge, or are we talking about...
Yeah.
Yeah, the overpass of 140.
I remember, well, it's supposed to be like shut down for like two years or something, right?
18 to 24 months.
18 months, I thought they had said, right? And that was...
Yeah, so I don't know what's going on with that. We are working on the RFP for the, for our, for to get the engineer for the bridge update that we're doing. So that actually is in my paper here to review and see if we can get that out.
Okay.
Do you want to call recess?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
10 minutes, maybe? 10 minute recess?
Do I have to make a motion for that? I always forget.
Yes.
All right, I want to entertain a motion to go into recess until 6:00 PM.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is 6:00 PM, and we are now back from recess and in open session. Tonight's a very special night because we have some third graders in Freetown Elementary School who are here because they won the selectmen for the, for the night essay contest. So everyone, want to just wave and say hi to the camera up there? So I guess first I'd like to say, you know, we're very proud of you. Reading your essays, we could really, I could at least really feel how proud you are to be from Freetown, and how much pride you take in here, and you really, you guys did a great job of articulating all the great assets that our town has. So we appreciate it. So I'm gonna give each of you the opportunity, or the op, you know, the option, but not, you're not required to, if you'd like to read your essay. Does anyone want to read their essay? Okay.
Yes.
So, and I'm just gonna say, so we're gonna start off here with Alexander. I always want to just state your name, and then you can read your essay, and then we'll move down the line.
Wait, do I say my name first?
Yeah, you can say. This is what, we make everyone say their name during a meeting, so that, for the, for the record.
I'm Alexander. Why I'm proud of, why I'm proud of my community. I'm proud to live in Freetown, Massachusetts, because it's a special place with a lot of history, nature, and kind people. Freetown is one of the oldest towns in the whole country. It was started a long time ago, even before America became a country. We even had a small battle here during the American Revolution. One of my favorite things about Freetown is the Free Town Flaw River State Forest. It's huge and full of trees, animals, and trails. I love going for walks there, riding my bike, or just enjoying nature. There is also a big rock called Profile Rock that looks like a face. Some people say it looks like a Native American chief. It's very cool and fun to see. Our town is also pretty. We have a long pond, which is a big lake where people go fishing and boating. The sunsets over the water are beautiful. But most of all, I love the people here. Everyone is friendly and helps each other. We have good schools, and our teachers work hard to help us learn. I feel safe here, and that makes me proud to be part of this community. Freetown may be small, but it has, but it has a big heart. That's why I'm proud to call it home.
Great job.
Why I'm proud of my community. I am proud to live in Freetown, Massachusetts, because it is a small town with a big heart. It is full of history because it is over 300 years old. There are a lot of cool places to see and fun things to do. One of the coolest landmarks is the Freetown State Forest. You can go hiking, ride bikes, or eve, or even have fun at the splash pad. There are even legends about the Freetown State Forest, including the mysterious pug wedgies that live there. There is also a long, there is also a long pond, which is one of the longest ponds in the state. My favorite thing to do in Freetown is play softball for the town. I get to play with my friends and have fun. I love wearing our team colors, red, white, and blue. One of my favorite, one of the best things about playing softball is I get to be part of the Fourth of July parade. It makes me feel proud to be part of the community. I also love watching the fireworks from Hathaway Park. Me and my family go every year. It is one of my favorite town traditions. Freetown is where I get to learn, grow, and have fun. It has lots of history, pretty places, and awesome people. I am happy to call it my home.
Great job. Awesome. Charlie?
Hello, my name is Charlie Salmon. Why I'm proud of my community. I am proud of my community because it was, it is clean, safe, and fun. My town is clean because people that live there are proud of their community and keep it clean. I rarely see trash in the streets or parks. My community is safe because I can ride my bike around my community and feel comfortable while doing it. I also feel safe to go for a walk at night with my family. My community is fun because there are sports you can play, like soccer, softball, baseball, basketball, football, and more. It is also fun because there are events and festivals you can attend to. In conclusion, I am proud of my community because it is clean, safe, and fun.
Great job. Max, next?
Hi, my name is Max. Why I'm proud of my community. These are a couple things I love about my community in Freetown, Massachusetts. One thing I love about my community is it is thoughtful because they do events for grownups and kids. There are some events coming up, like Fourth of July fireworks and parade. The parade throws out candy for the kids. A second reason I love my community is it is quiet. There are not many cars driving, so it isn't noisy like cities. We have big yards that we can read and relax in. A third reason I love my community is the school is loving and has fantastic teachers, the best principal ever, and the best principal ever. They have lots of fun field trips and events for the kids. There are many kids to play with, even if they are not your friend yet, so you can make new ones. The last reason I love my community is they have cool trains that I get to see sometimes when I go home from school sometimes. I can always hear the train at my house. The train goes all the way to Boston, so someday I can ride it to Boston to see lots of cool stuff. I can always hear the train at my house. The train goes all the way to Boston, so someday I can ride it to Boston to see lots of cool stuff. These are a couple things I love about my super cool community in Free Town, Massachusetts.
So first thing I'd like to say is the other kids have very good essays. And mine is called "Free Town the Beautiful" by Lucas Carrier. I am proud to live in a, in a very nice, small town called Free Town. It is a great place that is filled with generous people, kind people, and appreciative people. I love living in Free Town because it is, because of the great small community we have. There is the Free Town State Forest with a splash pad, hiking trails, and the best thing is that you can bring your dirt bike or quad. I even take my dog Gunner for walks in the forest. My favorite family time is when we go to Annie's Ice Cream, which is also in Free Town. There is, there are many other cool buildings and restaurants around town. I like to visit the libraries to check out all the nice books. Free Town Elementary School is also a great, great place. It has nice teachers and staff, like Ms. Fazon and the principal, Mr. Ward, and other teachers. Thanks to our selectmen and our town clerk, we get to set up events like Earth Day, where we get together and pick, and pick up trash and clean up our community. In the summertime, our town has fun events for the community. We have some summer concerts and some big screen movie nights. Sometimes after my baseball game, we watch some late night baseball games, and we get some food, drinks, and I always make sure that we don't forget the snacks. In summary, I am proud to live in a very nice, small town called Free Town. It is beautiful, it is a beautiful community with nice people, cool buildings, and has fun things to do. I love Free Town. Free Town is the best.
Well, that was so well done, everybody. I just wanna, you know, make a point here that, that public speaking is the, right, the number one fear among humans. And you guys, even scarier than spiders and bears and everything else. So, I'm, we're really proud of the courage it takes to get up here and do public speaking. So I think I see some, some future politicians up here, for sure. So really well done. So one of the, one of the things that we have to do as a selectman is we have to vote on certain items. So we have an agenda tonight of some things that we're gonna vote on. And I think, I think some of these items are definitely gonna resonate with you guys because it's related to some of the, some of the topics we saw in your essays, including the Fourth of July, and, you know, maybe some candy related type things, so. So we're gonna kick, we're gonna kick this off, and we're gonna do some voting, and we'll, we'll walk you through it and teach you how to do it. It's pretty straightforward. Alright, so agenda item 15, and this is a discussion of vote whether approve the open session minutes from 5:19, 2025. So what this, what this agenda item means is that after every meeting, our great staff, they, they take notes of everything that we said, and that's put into the public record as, as a document. And we have to go in and sign off that, that this is what, in fact, what we did say. And then anyone can look that up whenever they want to say, hey, you're saying this now, but, but last week you said this. So it keeps us honest. So we're gonna vote, and what happens here is I'm gonna, maybe we'll do this one just as a selectman, and then, you know, to get a feel for it, and then, and then you can follow along for the next vote. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 5:19, 2025.
Motion made. I second.
So once I've, I've entertained the motion, the motion was made, and then it was seconded. So now I say, and don't worry about it, you don't have to get this right the first time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's the most important part. And so now we all agreed, so now we've assigned and we've approved those minutes, those, those, the notes from our last meeting. Alright, so, and we have a, a few votes that we'll do in a moment. Next up though, before we do those votes, we wanna, we wanna congratulate the Tuesday Club on, on the Strawberry Festival. Did anyone here go to the Strawberry Festival? No?
No.
Well, you guys should go next year. I went. I went with my wife and my son, and we ate a lot of strawberry shortcake, and it was delicious. I know Deb, you were there, right?
No, I'm not sure.
Luann, Luann, you were there. You were there. Yeah, it was awesome. So there's some stats we have in the agenda here about the, the strawberry, what page is that on? Okay, I got it. So this is the 35th Tuesday Club Strawberry Festival. And so it takes 300 pounds of strawberries to be cut up for the, for the event. There's 130 pans of shortbread equal to 1,125 shortbreads. There's 500 hot dogs eaten. And the Tuesday Club is 132 years old, so they've been up in operation since 1893. Pretty old. So I went, it was great. Thank you very much, and congratulations on another successful year. Okay. So agenda item 17. This is discussion of vote to close the town hall, library, council on aging, highway department, and transfer station for the Fourth of July holiday. Alright, so we have to make a decision here. Do you guys think that all these folks who work in our town and work hard all year, do you think they should get a day off, and we should close the, the town hall and library so that they can enjoy the Fourth of July?
Um, probably.
You think so?
Yeah.
I mean, if you don't, if you don't agree, I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to hear your, your perspective.
Is it okay with you? Close them down?
What do you guys think?
Well, I think if everybody's already like celebrating that stuff, they shouldn't really, like, people won't really go to there.
I agree.
So I think they should get a day off.
Good point. Good point. Any other perspectives on this?
What do you think, Max? Should we close it down?
Alright, Lucas?
Alright, so now I'm gonna entertain a motion, and we're gonna walk through this. So I'll entertain a motion that we close the town hall, library, council on aging, highway department, and transfer station for the Fourth of July holiday. Do I have that motion?
So wanna, who wants to say it with me? Motion made? Can you guys say motion made?
Motion made.
Motion made.
Motion made.
Motion made.
Alright, now, do I have a second? Does, does anyone else agree with that motion being made?
Does anyone else wanna say second?
Second.
Yes, alright.
Second.
All in favor?
Now we're all gonna say aye.
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 Great job, guys. Thank you.
It's your first official vote on the record. It's pretty cool.
Okay, now, the next agenda, agenda item is 18. So when anyone wants to sell things in town, like they, you know, the, the Fourth of July parade, or the fireworks, you'll, you'll, you'll find people selling, you know, different kind of treats, and candy, and, and bubble guns, and all kinds of stuff. Anyone that wants to sell stuff in town, they have to come before the board, and they have to get a license in order to, in order to do that. You know, sometimes we turn a blind eye if it's a lemonade stand that someone's setting up. But generally, you know, you gotta, if you wanna do business in town, you have to have, have a license in order to do that. So do you think, do you guys think that we should approve the Hawker and Peddler's License, what it's called? So folks can sell different items down at the Fourth of July parade?
What do you guys think?
Yeah?
Yes.
Your parents might not want you to pass this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay, so we're gonna do the same thing now. I, I, unless anyone has, you know, wants to discuss this and has a, thinks that we should not allow them. I'm, I'm all ears.
Can we allow them to what?
What's that?
Allow them to sell stuff, like the balloons and the candy.
Yeah, balloons, candy. Okay.
It's a good idea.
Cookies. Good idea.
Yep.
Who doesn't like cookies, right?
Sometimes there's ice cream down there as well. Ice cream truck?
Ice cream, yeah.
Looks like a snow cone on a hot day.
Nope.
Alright, so with that, so I'm gonna entertain a motion that we approve the Hawker and Peddler's License for the 3rd of July fireworks in Free Town. For the, is it, should that be Fourth of July? Is it on the 3rd?
Fireworks are on the 3rd.
Okay, this year, yeah. Fourth of July fireworks in Free Town, for Nico's Novelty. Someone make that motion?
Motion made.
Motion made.
Motion made.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great job.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys are quick learners.
Yeah, you guys are. You guys are good.
It took me a lot longer than that.
I'd say, I think it'd be at least 10 meetings.
Yeah. Okay, so now, agenda item 19. So this is discussion of vote whether to grant exclusive access to Hathaway Park for the Fourth of July parade fireworks in July 3rd and 4th, 2025. So, now generally, anyone can go to the park whenever they want and use it to go play games and, you know, have fun. But when we have a big event there, we don't want someone to show up and, you know, and, and, or we, we want everyone to be very well aware that, that only the folks who are allowed to be there to set up the fireworks can use the, the park. Right, so, so what this motion is related to is saying, making it known that only people involved in the firework committee can use that area for those two days. Otherwise, someone might show up and say, hey, you know, I, I plan on having a big picnic here. And they can't do it because there's fireworks going on. So this is, or someone's trying to have a yoga. You can't have yoga at the same time that you're, that you're trying to have fireworks. Does anyone have any issues with this? You know, so this is just giving exclusive rights to the fireworks committee to use Hathaway Park where the fireworks are, so no one else tries to use that same park. I did do a great job of explaining that.
Gives us time to set up, make sure they have, all the vendors have a place to be. Shut, shut the traffic down.
What if they, put it this way, what if someone tried to have in a softball game at the same time that they're trying to set up for the fireworks? That'd be a mess, right?
20 on 20? We have lights.
Okay.
But some people still have lights.
That's true. I'm sure we can find some. Lights and some bases.
Alright, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to avoid confusion, that we grant exclusive access to Hathaway Park for the Fourth of July parade and fireworks on July 3rd and 4th, 2025. Anyone wanna make that motion?
Who wants to say motion made?
Motion made.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great job, everybody. So this, agenda item 20 is, is similar. So this is discussion of vote to close South Main Street and Water Street for the Fourth of July parade on July 4th, 2025. So, think about this, we, we don't want cars driving around at the same time that the parade's going on. That'd be very dangerous, right? So now, we have to vote on that up here to make sure that, that everyone is well aware, and that no one's trying to drive on those roads. So are we all, are we all in consensus on this? Do we all agree that there shouldn't be cars and parades going at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Crush the candy, right?
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close South Main Street and Water Street for the Fourth of July parade on July 4th, 2025. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Motion?
Motion made.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great job, guys. Okay. Yep, okay, so now, after we vote on things, then we have to sign to, to finish the process, so that now it's in the public record that we voted on this, and we signed on it. Wait till you see my, my signature.
Yeah, ready, watch this.
Nobody, nobody can read it.
Who'd they want to read? They think his is better. Just look at mine.
That doesn't mean anything.
Okay, find your name, Emma.
There's your sign right above the line.
Right here?
Yep, sign right above your name. Perfect.
Let's see, practice. See what you got. Right, pass it on your sheet. See what you got.
Alright, pee with that. Thanks, bud. Alright.
What do you think? Was that fun? I thought you were gonna say no.
Perfect. Thanks for that.
No, change my mind? Good idea sometimes.
Alright, so now, each of you are gonna receive a certificate for winning the contest. So Luann and I were thinking that three of us will stand up there, three selectmen, and then we'll call each of you individually, so take a picture and get presented with your certificate. Does that work? Okay. I might have you hand it to me. I mean, Carlos, you wanna?
Yeah, that's right. A wheel over there. Show up the new ones.
Alright.
I'm usually taller than both of them, so.
Lucas, go first. This might be the first time we've got a baseball uniform. Congratulations. Can I need to hold this?
Yeah, you have to block out the second gloves, bro.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Charlie. Wanna hold that like this way?
Either way, pick one.
Congratulations, Emma. Great job. Congratulations. You? Alright, so do you have to sign anything else? Okay, so this is the best part of the meeting. Now we have to vote on whether we want the meeting to be over or not. Alright?
Yes, thank. Keep having fun.
And I haven't had dinner yet, so. Well, any questions before I close the meeting? Everyone good? What do you guys think? Yeah, please.
It was fun.
Thank you.
So you guys are watching the Fourth of July. I did that.
Thinking, okay.
Are you guys gonna go watch the Fourth of July?
Alright, you can ask me after the meeting. Alright? Okay, so with that, well, first I'd like to thank all, all you kids who are coming up here and doing this. Awesome, great job. Thank you to the parents. Really appreciate it. And the teachers, obviously, and, and faculty. You know, Charlie, see, I was killing time letting you come up with your question. Yes, Charlie?
Um, so, um, wait, um, wait, I had, um, is this how every single, like, meeting is like?
Pretty much, yeah. This is the, the most fun meeting. A lot of times, you know, a little boring sometimes, but, but yeah. I mean, if you guys come to every meeting if you want. Do you have a question? Yeah?
Do you ever use that mouth?
I have how to use it, uh, once, yes.
Why?
It's a long story.
Sometimes when people don't wanna listen, it helps get their attention.
Sometimes people get very passionate about, you know, the agenda item that, that relates to them. One time I had to use it. I did. I don't like to use it. Yes?
Um, is this more or less people you have had in the meetings?
This is a lot more than usual. Yep, great question. I, I think that more people should come to meetings because the things we're deciding, you know, they do impact everyone's life, right? If you live in this town, you know, people have voted us in to make these decisions. So we'll have some meetings that, you know, for some reason, if anything's about the trash, anything to do with trash, we get a lot of people show up. But, uh, and sometimes, you know, there's hot button items that people show up for, but generally, we have a pretty low turnout. You know, we have 9,300 people in town, give or take. Is that right?
9206 was the last.
9206. And yeah, sometimes we have zero people, so. Yes?
Um, do you have to come to meetings?
I, at least two of us need to come to a meeting for, to have a quorum, which means that there's a majority of the board is present. There's nothing legally obligating me to come or us to come, but, you know, if you, if you don't show up to your meetings, you're not gonna get voted back in. So the voters keep us honest and keep us, you know, to show up. That's great, great questions.
Yeah, it was.
This is, this, we should, remind me in future years, we should add this, the Q and A.
We, we have a question?
Yep.
Are those cookies in the back for them or for us?
Best question. I was thinking the same thing.
Plenty for everyone.
I think we're sharing the cookies.
Maybe.
Great question. So with that, I'm gonna entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Who wants to make the motion with me? Anyone? Alright, so we're gonna say motion made.
Motion made.
Motion made.
Do I have a second?
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nailed it. Thank you, everybody.